Yes, your honor, it has.
Roll call, please. Oh, excuse me.
I'll stand for the pledge, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with a routine justice for all.
Now we'll do the roll call.
Alderman Ellis.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Zwort.
Here.
Alderman Stray.
Here.
Alderman Kavieski.
Here.
Alderman Miller.
Here.
Alderman Rosick.
Here.
Alderman Shaw.
Okay, first item on the agenda is a public hearing. The purpose of the hearing is to hear public comment regarding the draft East Wisconsin Avenue design overlay ordinance, which creates new requirements for developing properties within the Wisconsin Avenue corridor from the roundabout east to the city limits. Proposed requirements are for new construction within this area. Amendments to the requirements and regulations include, but are not limited to, building height setbacks, massing, ground floor transparency, open space, parking, vision corners, building materials, and sustainability. Jason will give us a presentation initially.
Thank you, mayor, common council. I will give a brief presentation on the proposed text amendment that's before you this evening. First, I just wanted to highlight a little bit of the process for the benefit of the people in the audience and for the common council members. It's been a process. We started back in August of this summer where the committee of the whole directed staff to start this process. Then in October, a draft was created in-house by staff and we went ahead and we reviewed that draft. At that meeting, you guys directed us to take it to the Architectural Commission and they reviewed it on November 8th for their feedback because this is an ordinance that pertains a lot to building design. We took their comments, incorporated them in, and we held a public informational meeting on November 20th. On December 13th, we took the information that we received from the public informational meeting and we incorporated those comments in and we held a public hearing on December 13th, which was last week at the Plan Commission, and the Plan Commission recommended approval. Tonight, here we are at December 19th, we are holding a second public hearing or the third public informational meeting to get comments. And then it's on the agenda tonight for action by the common council. And finally, if it is approved, we would hold a second reading and it would become law as early as January 16th. So that's the process for this ordinance. What is the ordinance? Well, this is an ordinance similar to the design overlay ordinance for the downtown area. It pertains to two things, how the sites are laid out and how the buildings look, okay? It covers building material standards. Something new in this one that we talked about at committee of the whole level is no metal siding. So that was a new amendment in this ordinance. The building heights, we dropped them down. Some of them in the downtown area, we remained at 70 feet. This East Avenue, we dropped everything down from 70, that is currently allowed, down to 50 maximum. And I'll have a map showing that. We created setback minimums. Right now, we have a zero setback for buildings. So buildings can be built right up to the sidewalk, up 70 feet in the air. We are changing that. We've created, some of the setbacks are very minimal, but we have a setback. We are requiring green space. In the downtown zoning district that we currently have, there's zero percentage of green space required. You can build and have the entire lot hard surface. Not anymore. We are requiring some green space. We are requiring some landscaping, same thing. We do not require any landscaping at this point. And this East Wisconsin Avenue has a different feel when we initially walked it, we talked to you, and we showed you pictures, that it has some existing green space. So we felt, why not just put it in an ordinance format that they have to maintain that? And then the other one was onsite parking. We know that right now, we don't require any onsite parking. A lot of retailers or residential uses will incorporate it, but this ordinance now puts a requirement that they must have some onsite parking. And again, for the benefit of the audience, these things aren't required to be mandated right away. This is for any redevelopment project that is a tear down and they rebuild. So anything that's out there today can stay. And then finally, we encourage pavement more on the sides of the building to bring the buildings up. Okay. So the committee of the whole worked with planning staff, and this is our recommended map that we had. There's obviously been a lot of public feedback on this and there's been changes. The Plan Commission, as I mentioned, met last week. They made some recommendations and the changes that the Plan Commission recommended are right here. So I will just show a little bit. You can see on the previous map, right in the center, there's a lot of red area that was shown. We used to call that the gateway area because it was the gateway into the city. We've changed names now and we added, we made that all blue. That is now the east or the west Lapham area, and the building height would be 20 to 50 on that area, okay? In the upper corner, up near the bridge, there was concerns that 50 feet was too high. So it's kind of washed out on the screen, but that does say up to, I think, 35 feet. And that is the current requirement today. That used to be, I'll go back, it was at 50 feet, and that is now 35 foot maximum. And we have a different name for that area as well. And then we have the remaining area was before, oops, was 35 foot. And some of the, and when I say the remaining area, it'd be east of Lapham. It's, we changed it from 35 to 50. There was a lot of comments made at both the public hearings, at Plan Commission and the public informational, that those are potential redevelopment sites. There's not a lot of residential around them. There's topography going up that hill. Why not allow buildings there to go up to 50 feet? 35 just did not seem appropriate, so the Plan Commission recommended the change from 35 to 50. So there is, the building heights now are basically 20 to 50. 20 would be the minimum, all the way to 50 feet is the maximum for the entire corridor. And you might say, well, that's odd, why don't you just make it all one color then? There's different, other different requirements in the red and the blue areas. Green space requirements are a little different, setbacks are different. So I would like to keep it. And we used Lapham Road as a natural divide and we called it the East Lapham area and the West Lapham area. And then we have that third area up there, and that's called the Walnut Street area. That's 35 feet. There was concerns that we're encouraging development up here at the, by the bridge, that little residential area. There's some really fine residential homes up there in good condition. Why would we encourage those to be torn down and built with tall condominiums? So we kept that at 35. I do have the other map for, if anyone is interested in seeing how it connects to the other one, but I don't want to get into that, so I'll just leave this up. We'll end the public hearing, my portion, and I'll be available to answer any questions that the council may have later. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. We'll open it up for public comment now. If anybody has any comments on this Plan Commission recommendation and what we'll be discussing, please come up to the podium. There are blue cards there, fill them out, and speak your piece. So anybody who'd like to come up, come on up. State your name and address. Just state it for the record.
My name's Lynn Hadawski. I'm the property owner of 650 East Wisconsin Avenue. I was at the Planning Commission meeting last week and I spoke and expressed some concern about the heights and the setbacks. I have one of the more narrow properties that would have been in what is referred to as the salmon-colored area. The salmon-colored area had a 15-foot setback. When you started working this all into my lot, I ended up with nothing to redevelop in case I ever had to develop. And I did mention, I have no plans of developing at this point, but if I was ever faced with a catastrophe of sorts, I'd have to do something. And I think it was just limiting what I could do. So anyway, I believe the changes that the Planning Commission have proposed, the map that I'm looking at, I think that's a positive change. I think I would be happy that the council would move forward with those types of heights and those kinds of setbacks. It is a positive thing for me, and I think it, being this is a business area, leaving height and giving the property owners some flexibility to develop is a huge positive thing. The only other thing I'd like to say is, there's been a lot of talk about how long this thing has been planned. I'm a property owner and I didn't get much information at all about these changes until a notice was sent to me, and I received it maybe four or five days before the original hearing. Would have been nice, I think, for the planners to come out and talk to the property owners about, and take a look at their sites and see how their proposals were going to affect them originally. Now, it's a good thing, I think. And I'm pleased with what I'm seeing there. But it would have been nice to be more in the loop until we're in the 11th hour here. So, thank you, and looking forward to the changes.
Thanks for your comments. Anybody else have anything they'd like to say? Come on up. State your name and address.
Good evening. Yes, Carl Schutz from 203 North Walnut, down the street. Have a couple comments. I've read through the proposal and the plan, and my comments, since I live at the corner and the boundaries by Pleasant and Walnut towards the bridge there, it's a lot of single-family residences at the present time. And architecturally, they all remain within the concept of what the council is considering right now. It's just the family density is larger for what you're considering, condos, apartments, whatever that may be. Whereas right now, it's a pretty tight-knit community of families. And there's a total of 16 families in the area that you're considering to redevelop. And as I've said, we're all pretty close knit. It's a lot more families that you're displacing when you consider going from a single-family residential district to a high-density district than I think the town has undergone in the previous five years. So in my mind, and it's a rather jaded, one-sided view, that's not fair to the 16 families because it's a lot of people that would be displaced. So I'll throw that out there. The other thing is the setbacks. I would encourage the council to adopt a 10-foot or greater setback on Wisconsin Avenue. Three years ago, there was a fatality by the Vision Works. A lady was struck and killed. The setbacks there just are too close. And the recent apartments right across from the Quick Trick on the roundabout, that setback, you know, if you're coming out from the street just south of Wisconsin, you know, if somebody's walking there, they have no chance. If a car with a person is driving and they're not paying attention or the sun's in their eye, they have no chance. And that's a bad situation that's just waiting to happen. So I'd consider, I'd ask the council to consider a little greater setback. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any other comments on this public hearing? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. We will discuss this more as we get into our actions on the proposed ordinance. Next item would be approval of the meeting minutes from November 21st, 2017. Need a motion to approve the minutes?
I'm moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion in second, all in favor of the minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are passed. Next, we have comments and suggestions from citizens. This would be on any other subject besides what we had at the public hearing. Any item that you'd like to talk about or give us an opinion on, please come up to the podium and express your thoughts. Seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. Tonight on the consent agenda, we have licenses. We have an electric utility easement between the City of Oconomok and 425 Lapham LLC and the treasurer's report. So we need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any questions or comments?
I do have one question. We've got Sobeys Restaurant already on here.
That's a different item. This is a different license.
Right, I know.
But how can they be, do they have an operator's license already?
They're applying for an operator.
I understand, but we're approving that license before we approve the liquor license, the operator's license?
This is for an individual bartender license?
I under, okay, I've got you.
It's not, it's a bartender license.
Just the operators.
Yeah. It's not the liquor license.
Gotcha.
If it's a liquor license, it doesn't pass, it wouldn't make any difference, though. Any other questions? Seeing none, we have a motion in second on the floor. Call the roll, please.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Zwort.
Aye.
Alderman Stray.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye.
Okay, and the committee reports, Finance Committee, first item is Consider Act on a Resolution Awarding Contract for Public Facilities Needs Assessment and Impact Fee Study for 2018. We need a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
All right.
City sent out request for proposals for the updated public facility needs and impact fee study. We sent out, I'm sorry, we had five responses, but only two actual proposals. The city evaluated them using our QBS process. Trilogy Consulting came in with the best technical score and also the best cost. Therefore, staff is recommending Trilogy Consulting for the updated impact fee study.
Thank you, Lori. Open it up for discussion. Matt?
Lori, before you walk away, just for the folks out here, I wanted to reiterate a question I had. We've never worked with Trilogy before?
That's correct.
Okay. And they were the, they came underneath Brookard and Milky for this one, is that correct?
The cost was lower, yes.
About $10,000?
$10,000, yes.
Where's Trilogy out of?
Brookard and Milky.
Brookard and Milky. No comment from the city attorney during the meeting. Have we worked with Trilogy before?
We haven't worked with Trilogy before. It's a local company.
They are, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments?
I'm glad to see that we are working with new companies now. That's excellent.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we have a motion in second on the floor. Call the roll, please.
Alderman Ellis.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt. Alderman Zwort.
Aye.
Alderman Stray.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye.
Okay, and the Protection and Welfare, first item is Consider Act on Resolution Granting a New 2018 Class B Intoxicating Fermented Malt Beverage License to Sobeys Restaurant LLC. We need a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Yes, thank you. One second, I just want to get this. Okay, thank you. We have an application for a Class B intoxicating liquor fermented malt beverage license for a new restaurant here in the city at 123 East Wisconsin called Sobeys Restaurant. It is a farm-to-table restaurant, so it's something that's gaining popularity, and so the city, if, you know, the license is granted, would have one of those restaurants here. The owners, Mike and Lydia Sobel, are here in the audience. They are anticipating opening on January 12th of 2018. And in order to get that opening going and order their stock, they need their license. However, as the clerk, I'm recommending that if council so grants the license, that it also makes it a condition that the clerk not issue it until the opening date is verified in January, someday, you know, time in January. If it's not the 12th, then another day in January. If not, then they would need to come back to council for reapproval of the license. That way, the license is not issued and therefore, say, maybe something happens and they don't open for three to six months and that license just sits there unused. And that's what we are trying to avoid here with that recommendation. The other thing I wanted to mention that I neglected to mention in Protection and Welfare is this is the last remaining regular license. So it's a $600 license. If this license is granted, then the city has reserves left, and those would be the $10,000 license. So if anyone else came in to apply for a license, that they would be applying for reserves.
Okay, thank you. Jeff?
Yeah, committee, we did talk about this. I'm very excited to see the restaurant coming in. I think it's a great, a great idea. And since I did make that motion, I would like to make it contingent on the conditions that you had mentioned as we talked about also in committee. So I think we have to modify it.
Okay. So done.
So we had a motion and a second. And Jeff, let's see, how do we do that? You modified it, do I have to?
No.
Okay.
The motion was to grant the license with a condition that it has to be, occupancy has to be in January.
Okay, that's fine. Matt?
Yeah, welcome. Good luck, guys. This is exactly why, for the last two to three years, I've been fighting to get liquor licenses back from folks that weren't using them, so that people like you can come in, take an old building downtown, turn it into a cool restaurant that I hope a lot of people go to. I see it in a lot of other communities around the country, as the downtown's kind of died when strip malls came in, but people are coming back to them with these kind of restaurants. So that was our goal for the council for the last three years. I think we've accomplished that, and we're moving in the direction that we wanted to move in, which is redevelopment down here with places that are going to attract folks. And good luck to you guys. So I'm all in favor.
Charlie?
Diane, if we grant this license, this license is through June?
Correct.
So it's basically for a half a year? So is it half the fee then, too?
Yes, their liquor licenses by statute are prorated, and we would prorate it, and they would have to come in for renewal time with their paperwork in May.
Okay.
If it was not granted, or put it this way, if they're not ready in January and we don't issue it and someone else comes in and issues it and it's the regular license and they have to come in later for the $10,000, that's due upfront, though.
Yes, it is.
So the $10,000 fee, initial fee is due upfront if that one, doesn't matter when they take it, it's due upfront.
In other words, open in January. Get the doors open, one way or the other.
And the $10,000 fee is initial, after that, it's 600 a year. It's not $10,000.
You're not going to have to worry about that.
You're okay? Lou?
With the way this is structured, they'll have the numbers that they need to give for ordering. But it's not going to be issued until we have a firm date.
Correct.
And at that time, they'll take it into possession.
Correct.
So it won't inhibit them from moving forward.
Right.
Thanks for opening this restaurant. This is exactly what we wanted, and good luck to you. And I just wondered how many reserve licenses we have left?
Well, available, we have four, but as of January 1, due to our population growth, we are eligible for a fifth.
Right, so we'll have another one.
And we're still holding one for Fowler Lake Village.
And the Spinnakers. Right, in addition.
So we'll have five available, two new businesses beyond the two that are already spoken for.
And not at Hacienda, just went on a business. That stays with the building.
Well, they have the license, it's issued to them through June 30th. And so, however, you know, our code does say if they are not operating, I believe it's 180 days that we could look to revoke it. However, that would be very close to the renewal time, and I don't know if they're going to come back and ask for renewal or not. I just know that at this point in time, they are closed.
We'll have to look at that later this, later next year.
Guys, make sure you get, open in January, okay? It'd been nice to get you open before the holidays because that's 80% of the business for the year, so. Not that I'd have a lap or two around the pool, but.
Just procedurally, is the license that we're going to get in January, is that a reserve license as well?
Yes.
It is.
Anything new coming out will be a reserve.
Correct.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion in the second on the floor. Call the roll, please.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Zwort.
Aye.
Alderman Stray.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Miller. Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye.
Okay, next item is Consider Act on Western Lakes Fire District Contracts for Fire and EMS Services for Various Communities. We need a motion to approve the Western Lakes Fire District contracts?
So moved.
Second.
Do you want to do it?
Sure, I can introduce this. The City of Oconomok became part of the Western Lakes Fire District in March of this year. And part of the inter-municipal agreement is that the municipal owners of the district approve any contracts that we have with other municipalities to provide fire and EMS services. There are four communities, four, I shouldn't say communities, four contracts, contract areas, one with Town of Oconomok, the Village of Lock Bell, Sullivan EMS, which incorporates the Town of Concord, Village of Sullivan, and the Town of Sullivan, and then the Town of Ashopin, varying services between the different communities for fire and EMS. And the recommendation from the committee was to recommend approval of all of these contracts going forward.
Thanks, Sarah. Does anybody have any questions? Go ahead.
I know, it's one of those nights for me. Brad, can I, one question for you? Did the other three municipalities already approve these? Or do you come to us first on these?
You guys are right in the middle. Summit discussed them and approved them. Delsman did not. Ottawa, actually, Delsman approved them, Ottawa did not. So it's you guys and Ottawa.
So Ottawa still has to approve. It's not that they haven't approved it, you just haven't gone to them.
Right.
Okay. And one of the things we discussed in the committee meeting, just for the folks that are out there, a few of my concern was the non-recoverable costs, and that's been factored into the budgets that we're charging these contractual entities essentially. It's part of the budget process, and I think most of them are kind of three-year average, essentially. So I think that's positive. So, thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
Kevin?
I'm in Ottawa.
Haven't done it yet.
Kevin, he hasn't been in front of them yet.
They haven't had a meeting yet.
Oh, yeah, it hasn't been in front of them yet.
Okay. It's not that they haven't approved it, they just haven't had a chance to approve it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Jeff?
Just a comment, not a question. I know how much work this was for you to go back and redo now with the merger and everything in very, very time, but I mean, you did a nice job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion in second on the floor to approve the fire district contracts. Call the roll, please.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Zwort.
Aye.
Alderman Stray.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Miller. Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye.
Okay, moving on, we, next item is Consider Act on Resolution Awarding 2018 Street Program Engineering and Construction Associated Service. We need a motion to approve the resolution?
Make that motion.
Second.
Moved in seconded, Mark?
Thank you, mayor. The item for you tonight is our annual street maintenance projects that, you know, were discussed earlier in the year for 2018 as part of our professional services procurement as part of our professional services procurement process. We put together an RFP, provided that to several consultants. Received three responses back. They were reviewed by three people within the city and provided technical scores. We then, as the second step of the process, opened up their cost envelopes and then factored in points associated with the cost. Based on this process, Rooker Milky was ranked number one and they were also low cost. So we are, excuse me, recommending them at a cost of $262,800 for the work.
Thank you. Open it up for discussion.
Just one of those nights. What do we do to get more folks to bid on these things? I mean, only three to five were sent out, 14 were given out in total. I mean, what, is there something else that we can do to try to get more involvement?
You know, we extended the time, we've simplified the process. You know, one of the things where I talked in the committee about assigning some of the task hours, that actually lessens the burden on all the consultants out there as they go through that. They don't have to spend the time and try and figure out how many hours they need to. There's still some tasks that we expect them to do that on, but, but not on all of them. So, you know, we've taken those steps. And some of them had responded that they were booked already. SEH had responded back that they weren't going to be putting in, but hadn't indicated anything, so.
And I know you sent out only three to five right off the bat to groups we probably have done work with before, I'm assuming.
Ones that had responded previously in the past.
Okay. Is there a way to expand that, you know, mailer? You know, other than people just seeing it in an advertisement or on the website, actually actively, you know, maybe sending it out to 10 next time or 12 next time?
As I mentioned, I had gone back through on the, on the ones that had responded in previous years and had sent out thinking that we would have the better chance of them once again submitting something. If we, you know, had 10 other companies in the past that did not submit, then the chances of them submitting are slim.
I guess I, I would like to see in the future us trying to get a few more than, you know, three or four or five out if we can, if there's a way to do it.
We were hoping for more, I can guarantee you that.
I mean, I think even mailing them out to folks that, you know, are in the area, creating a circle of, you know, 100 miles and trying to get it to more engineering firms, it to me would create maybe better competition for these numbers.
And I can guarantee you that the firms, you know, we have firms out of state that were some of the first to request this. I mean, the day the notice went out, they were sending in requesting. So engineering firms out there are tied into the digital areas that, you know, this information is being provided to and, and they are seeing it quickly, so.
One of the things Derek talked, I'm not going to steal your thunder if you want to talk about this. But I would at some point like to see the inspection services pulled out as well. I'm with Derek on that and I'll let Derek talk about it more if he wants to. But I'm not unpersuaded by the other discussions we had in committee on this, but I think inspection services, just the inspection services, not the management, not everything else in the surveying, but just the inspection should be pulled out and done by a separate entity. I think it would create a little bit more honesty in the process and it would ensure that the designer and the construction guy and the ultimate inspector who's looking at it are three different entities. I think that gives us a more honest perspective. But I'd like to just see that, how that would play out maybe in some future bid process and see if there's a cost difference or whatever. We can talk about it more, you know, outside of this meeting, but that's something I would encourage us to do in the future.
We can look at that once we hit 2018 and see where we're at. I had one comment or question on the lack of responses that we, we get. Do some of these out-of-state companies look at it and say, this isn't really big enough for us even to? Because this isn't really a lot, this is 252 or 60,000. Is it something that an out-of-state company would just say, this isn't really? Are time consuming enough? I mean, it's, it's not a lot of work, it's a lot for us, but it's not a lot for somebody that's a big engineering firm.
You know, all firms are going to look at this and they'll all go through the same process as to whether or not they're going to take the time and expend the money to put together a response to the proposal. I mean, we get bound copies of all their information. And it takes, you know, it takes some time to put these together. This isn't a 10-minute operation. So they will look at that, some of it, you know, is the cost. I mean, you know, the second-ranked firm is Chippewa Falls area and look at the cost difference. So they will look at that. They look at several factors, you know, what's their workload? When you talk about the cost, you know, only a portion of that's profit. And, you know, if you start taking on additional costs, it doesn't take long to eat up, you know, what little profits into this number.
Yeah.
Kevin?
Do we have a database of companies that can do similar work associated to what we're looking for?
We don't have a database, but they're all out there looking at the same publications.
Because have we ever thought about a mailer and then following up with a phone call to those, to those places? Now, that's not going to assure that they're going to be in the bidding process, but it's our way of doing due diligence. So we're giving them the opportunity to come on the ground floor. If they decide not to, well, then they don't.
They have that opportunity when they receive and I'm not in disagreement with, with what you're saying. You know, but, you know, making calls until they've gone through and done their internal review process would not be fruitful. I mean, we'd have to wait for that to happen, you know, if they wanted to have any discussion. One of the other things that we did on this process, as I mentioned, Alderman Rosick, that, you know, we did take steps to try and improve the number of responses that we get. We gave them almost a complete month to do it. The other thing is, is that we gave them an opportunity to submit any questions they had on the whole process by a date certain. And then those responses, we took those questions in-house, put together a response and then that was sent out to everybody. Not just the ones that submitted questions, but were sent out to everybody, so that, you know, they didn't have to take the time to come in here and do any work within the city. And so using the email and everything else, we were able to get information out to everybody and, you know, so why they choose not to. Generally, the response you'll get is that their staff time has already been allocated for the year.
One, one other thing, I just, I just want to say this and I know that I've kind of led this a little bit and it's really an eye saw with me. I have just found in my years of owning businesses and things on those lines that lack of competition breeds greed. And I want to make sure that we're getting the best we possibly can, as efficient as we can be when we go out and we bid these things, okay? Really, really important. And that's why I'm, I'm so adamant about trying to get as many people on board as we possibly can. That's not to say we're going to use them and who knows? Maybe they are the best in town and they are the most, for lack of a better word, cheapest, okay? But we're getting a good value for it. But we don't know that. And that's my only concern. Thank you for hearing me out.
Jeff?
Mark, I guess my only comment on that part of it is the fact that, you know, we're asking you to speculate and I don't necessarily think that that's fair. I think with the economy changing right now, we are seeing a lot more firms that are booked out multiple years. I would suggest that possibly we just do a random phone call after the fact and just find out, why didn't you submit? And then we're not speculating on why they didn't, we'll know. But I think it's reasonable to expect that we are going to be a little bit more limited. And possibly a solution to that would be to get this out a little bit earlier. I know it's hard to do with the budget process and everything and not knowing exactly where we stand. But, you know, we can probably, as a council, adjust that a little bit too, to know exactly what you're going to be working on. And maybe if we get it to them earlier before they have everything allocated, they'll bid on ours as opposed to somebody else's. But I know it's tough right now. So, thank you.
Derek?
I believe, I brought this up in, in committee, but I believe that it, it might give us a better quality product if, if we divided up the, the engineering design and the construction management inspection services. To have two separate entities do that, it would also give us the opportunity to work with two different firms. And we would get used to working with other firms in the process and maybe some of the issues that have been brought up. We would, we would not only be working with one firm and then other firms would tend to want to submit their bids. Bids and we'd get a more well-rounded group, I guess. And like I said in committee, on large state projects, they always have a different construction management inspection services than who does the design work. It's kind of a checks and balances thing. I realize it might be a little cheaper for us to hire one firm to do it and easier. But I, I think in order to get good competition, this would help that cause. I'm, I'm probably going to vote no because I've asked for this in the past and it hasn't happened yet out of principle. I'm, I'm okay with, with what we've done and I believe that we, we have the best available for the lowest cost. But I'd like to see that split out in the future.
Thanks. Anything else? Seeing none, we have a motion, second on the floor, for the resolution awarding the 2018 Street Programming, Engineering and Construction or Associated Services. Call the roll, please.
Alderman Ellis?
Nay.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Zwort?
Nay.
Alderman Stray?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Rosick?
Nay.
Excuse me, Alderman Shaw?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to Plan Commission Information or Projects. First item is Consider Act on An Ordinance to Repeal and Recreate Section 17.208 of the Zoning Code Relating to the Downtown Design Overlay District Building Design Standards. This is for East Wisconsin Avenue. This is for its first reading. I need a motion to give the ordinance its first reading.
So moved.
Seconded. Jason gave us a presentation during the public hearing. Let's open it up for discussion from that point and see where we want to go with it.
Can we put the map back up, Jason, so that we can all look at it while we're talking about it? I think that'd be helpful.
I think I want to have Derek talk first about this, since we discussed this in Plan Commission, you're the representative for the Council on Plan Commission and just give us your input on it from what we discussed there and go from there, okay?
Jason gave the overview earlier and talked about how we had it divided up from 20 to 50 and then 20 to 35. And based on somewhat upon architectural committee, one of the members, Kurt Johnson, I believe, is it?
Kent Johnson.
Kent Johnson, I'm sorry. He, you know, he brought up the point that this is a, that area is, is commercial anyway and it wouldn't be negatively impacted by higher building heights to the west. So that's one of the main reasons, and we talked about, discussed the building heights. We talked about raising the, the heights west and also it was brought up to bring the building heights, leave the building heights down lower on that Walnut Street area. And we, everybody was in agreement that that would be a transitional area that we'd like to see stay as a residential and not get redeveloped. One of the things I'd like to bring up is this doesn't mean that we're pushing development in this area. Some of the residents, I believe, feel like we're going to go out and make deals with developers to, to start putting condos up. That's not the case at all. It's basically to protect us so that if somebody sells and wants to redevelop in these areas, that we don't get a 70-foot building right on the curb like we have in the past. So we're trying to be preemptive on it and make sure that we, we have something that's going to have a consistent look and feel on the way into town. We don't have any, I mean, it'll develop on its own as our town grows, but we want to have managed growth, I guess, is what you'd say. The setbacks are important, I believe, to not have the canyon effect, as Jason said. And want to add anything?
I think you covered it all pretty well. I know that there's a difference between the two areas. And again, that's what was discussed in Plan Commission. This is, again, it says on our paperwork, it's a draft ordinance. If there's anything that this group would like to change, which we've done before and we changed it the last time we went through this, this is what the Architectural Committee had, had a certain look. The Plan Commission, when we met, we decided it made more sense to do it this way. It makes it simpler. If there's any changes that we want to make to this, say the, the area to the east, if we want to make that more consistent with what's to the west. The East Lapham and West Lapham, if we want to make it all the same, we could do that. What we found out though was listening to business owners and building owners and property owners to develop what we're looking for there, if you have residential, or if you have business on the first level, if you have residential second and third floor, the 35 feet wasn't high enough because you couldn't put in the right type of buildings. And again, this is a strictly commercial area. There's not any residential in here except when you get up towards the roundabout. That's pretty much, I think that pretty much covers it, right?
Yeah, we, the one thing I'd like to bring up is I noticed the legend, I think the set, the
Yeah, the legend's wrong.
Yeah, it needs to say 20 to 50 in the legend.
The East Lapham Street area should be 20 to 50.
We'll make that correction. We only had one day to turn this around from the Plan Commission meeting.
You can read that, Derek, it's really small.
I had to use my spectacles.
Oh, you did use your glasses, okay.
And there is one property that's in the Town of Oconwalk that we would look at trying to get into the city. Okay. Matt, you were first to bring it up.
Sure, I'll go, yeah.
You've been first all night, so you might as well.
Yeah, I might as well keep going with it. Couple of questions I had from your memo, Jason, in the section called Ordinance Updates. I liked all the updates so far that I've seen. In the third paragraph, it's, there was a suggestion about incorporating sliding scale for building heights on the building setback. That's not incorporated right now in it, is there?
No, I, I wanted to provide the common council with all the feedback that I received since the meeting. And in an email, in your, in the Plan Commission packet, I'm not sure what you got here, there was an email from Kent Johnson and he talked about the city of Delafield, how they have a sliding scale, that there's a minimum setback. And then if you push the building back further, you could get additional height, a sliding scale. It makes it a little confusing.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly what was my note, was that's too complicated and too confusing for what we're doing out there, I think.
Right.
I like the uniformity of it. I think the setbacks are fine. One of the questions, the other question I had was about, did we increase the, we didn't increase the density in this Walnut and Pleasant area, the 35 foot, right?
No, this has really not much to do with the, the actual uses. It's more of a site design and building design. The use up there is residential and we're not changing high density or anything like that, so.
Because the gentleman Carl Schutz came out and was talking about the density, I wanted to make sure he understood because I was a little unclear as well. We're not changing the density, we're just saying, look, right now that's 70 foot right now, right?
No, it actually isn't. It is zoned residential. Those are conforming uses and it actually is 35 foot height. So that's what we brought it back down to.
So we're not changing?
So we're really not changing. I mean, honestly, there is some slight differences. I mean, right now it's a 20-foot setback and we've, we're making some changes to the setbacks, but, you know, it's, there's not a lot of change to that Walnut area.
Because that area between Pleasant and Walnut is pretty much residential now, would it look odd for us to take that seven-foot setback and make that 10 feet there to keep it, maybe try to force it to stay more residential? I'm getting, I'm getting a head shake.
There is that apartment building there already on the corner.
That is true.
That's been there for years.
Yeah, that is true.
It's not completely single-family because there is that, that large apartment complex there.
All right.
On the northeast corner. And I can make the motion when we get ready to approve it to do that. I'm just asking you if that, I don't think it would change a whole lot of the look there right now because those houses are probably 10 feet or more already.
We have it seven feet. To go from seven to 10, I mean, if that's your preference, that's fine. I just was keeping it consistent with the other setbacks along Walnut Street to kind of keep some continuity and consistency of the setbacks.
And then when we go to the East Lapham section, this, this maroon color or salmon color, we're up to 15 feet. Are those buildings right now mostly there conforming to 15 feet? I mean, from just eyeballing it, driving by, it looks like most of them are probably at that right now. Like Laurelburgs and
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, most of them are pretty well back already.
Oh, yeah.
The last question I had was side yard setbacks. So when you're talking about a, a unit or a parcel, the setbacks, the side yard setbacks are what in these areas?
We didn't put it on the map because it would clutter up the map too much, but in the text portion of the ordinance, it says there's a side yard setback for buildings of five feet from any side lot line.
And that's so, so any parcel that's there, they have to be, both parcels, both units have to be five feet from the side yards of the other units.
Minimum of 10 then in between.
In between the buildings. Yep, gotcha.
Is that big enough for?
I, I think that's fine. No, I think
Are utility easements 15 feet?
Seven and a half. I need one for the building. This kind of gets us away from the problem we had down here with the, with condominiums where they weren't offset because that's a different zoning district and they have zero setback.
Yeah, we're already creating with this, you know, more significant setbacks. Right now, anybody could, before we pass, if we pass this tonight, right now, someone could take a building and head bought it before tonight, ripped it down, built something right on the sidewalk and put it up 70 feet. So what we're doing is really trying to create a, a, a better look in the community that's conforming with what we've already done downtown. And I think it's positive and I like the changes the, the Plan Commission did.
Side yard setback in most of this area is, is zero.
Right now.
So we're making it five feet.
Okay. Jeff, you were next.
Yeah, could you also, going back to the comment about the apartment building and the intersection south of Wisconsin or where they're there weren't the same standards then for vision corners as there are now. And this, I saw you have vision corners pretty much every place. Would you just explain for everybody what that vision corner is over and above, what the regular setback would be?
Well, the, the orange triangles on here, they're kind of hard to see. They're at each intersection. They mandate a vision corner preservation area that would be defined in the, in the ordinance. It's a minimum of 15 by 15, but if it's two arterial streets, it would be like by the roundabout, like 50 by 50 area. So, and, you know, there's significant vision corners that would be required now.
Right, so we, we did address that issue as we learned from the other building.
We will not have a repeated situation.
Right, and the other thing that I really did like about this is it does Right, and the other thing that I really did like about this is it does encourage, it doesn't mandate, but it does encourage that the parking be behind the buildings and we get the architecture out closer to the road, which is going to screen some of the parking, which I think will have a much nicer aesthetic look on, on that part of the avenue.
Right, we did use the word encourage. It's a poor word in, in an ordinance, but we didn't want to mandate that too much to require it in the back, so it is encouraged, yeah.
Kevin was next.
Jason, thank you. Why was this not done four years ago? I know you can't answer that question, but it's...
I can't, I can try to take a stab at it. We rewrote the zoning ordinance in 2012, which was a few years ago. And at that time, there was a different council. We were encouraging more economic development in our downtown and, you know, we went with an increased building height of 70 feet at that time. So that, that was a difference. It used to be 50 and then it jumped up to 70. Now it's back down to 50, so we're kind of bringing it back into the scale. So it, it was the direction of the common council back, you know, years ago that told us to, to jump it up a little bit.
Now, the setback right now is 10 feet or greater with the new proposal? Is that what it is?
It's a little, little hard to read. Right now, we have a zero setback for the downtown. And in here, we have anywhere from five feet is the, is the minimum to 15. It ranges, five feet setback off the, off the property.
And with the changes, that's going to become what? With the changes now, if it passes?
Well, it ranges, there's, they're highlighted on the map there, they're difficult to read here. But it's five feet along Wisconsin Avenue up to Lapham and then everything, east of Lapham, it jumps up to 15 feet.
Okay, my concern is sight vision because I'm, I was one of those individuals who had an accident over by the speedway. And the gentleman said, oh, I didn't see you, hmm, okay. If we have a five-foot setback, are we still going to have that 15 feet?
Well, there'll be vision corners and then there's five-foot setbacks as well, so you can clearly see that.
Right, I understand that, but my question here is if we go five feet, are we still going to have the 15-feet vision triangle? Will it still be there?
Yep. At the corner, there'll be 15 by 15 and then the rest of this lot would be five feet, which currently it's zero, so it's...
Yeah, right, I know, yeah. Thank you.
Derek?
My question has to do with the side yard setbacks because I know in residential subdivisions, we have seven-and-a-half-foot utility easements required from each property owner. Is that, is it, am I mixing apples and oranges here with these types of properties? Would we want 15-foot of utility easements between the properties? And would it make sense to go to seven-and-a-half-foot side yard setbacks so that we don't...
I think you're kind of mixing it up because residential, they run the lines to get to various, lots are stacked. This is, you're serving the development, it'll come in from the road, basically.
Okay, so I'm just...
You've got the lake in the back there, you're not really getting into the subdivision.
You don't need to go between the properties to get your utility easements. All right, that's, that was just my question.
Those setbacks that we're proposing, the five feet from the lot line, so you have 10 feet...
Just to work on them, right.
It's just to work on it, maintain the building.
Okay.
Tom?
Jason, you know, we beat our brains together for almost a year on the height restrictions. You know, we started, we wanted to tear the 70 feet and then worked their way back down to the far east end of there and the far west end of Wisconsin Avenue. And it was never 50 feet, correct?
What you guys previously showed was, was 35, right?
Okay.
And now it's up to 50 is what the proposal is before you.
So we're going to change it again and after all the work that we put in there, I, I just, I...
Went from 35 to 50.
We kind of looked at it to, you know, you know, tear it down, you know, like there instead of all of a sudden you've got, you've got a 50-footer here and you've got a 20-footer and all the way down like that. I mean, it's like a camel.
That was the philosophy when we did the downtown section, when you head from the four corners of Maine and Wisconsin. It's a 70-foot height limit and then, and then it slowly peters down 45, 35 into the residential neighborhood. So there was the idea of stepping the buildings down as you're exiting the downtown. Or if you're coming from the west and you're, you're heading eastbound into the downtown, you're gradually building up. What we're doing here is there is no real residential area to flow into or, or from. You're, you're going right from the bypass into the, into the commercial corridor. And the thoughts was is, you know, the current height limit is 50 feet, why go down to 35? Let's maintain the 50 feet of what's currently out there right now today.
But I beat my brain up for nine months trying to figure it out, it's tough on my brain.
Yeah, and one of the things we talked about too, with the businesses that are there now and what we're trying to emphasize is the business on the first floor, maybe residential, second, third or a three-story office building. You can't do it in 50, or in 35 feet, you have to have a little higher, so, Jeff?
Okay. Jason, you showed that slide of the west side. What's the setback on Worthington Street there? I can't quite make that out. In the yellow area?
35 to 40.
10 feet.
Okay. I guess, you know, I'm, I'm looking at it from the standpoint that if we're going to raise the, allow the building height to go higher, which I get, then I have to agree with Matt on the idea that we do have to definitely increase that step back. Because I think a 50-foot building, seven feet off the sidewalk, is going to give you a tunnel effect.
Right, there is a step back incorporated into this area.
Right, I get that, but I'm still saying, I think, I think, you know, we have plenty of depth on most of these lots, that they are very deep. And I, I think that there's, you know, maybe ways around it, but, and I did hear loud and clear, you know, on the one lot, that you got to have, you got to have some depth there, you know, because it's a very narrow lot. But I just don't see us going 50 feet up, seven feet off, even though you're going to have a step back. I think that's going to be very close.
No, I was only talking about that little residential area.
Well, no, I'm talking about all the way along that 20 to 50, the blue area.
Right.
Along Wisconsin Avenue, you got what there for?
Five foot setback.
Five foot? Well, five foot.
Which is even worse.
It's a five, okay, hang on. You got a five-foot step, setback, but then if the building goes up over 30 feet, then you have to step back the part up.
I get that.
So you're not going to have that canyon effect because the building's not going to be 50 feet straight up.
Well, we can say that. What I, the building that I'm using as the example is the apartment building at the Roundabout. And there is not a lot of setback there.
That was built when it was at zero, though.
See, that was the difference.
That's right on the sidewalk. But I guess what I'm saying is there's, there is green space along that, I'm not talking about the one in Worthington, I'm talking Super American.
Right, it's just a corner.
There's, there's green space there, but that building, that building still seems like it's very, very close to the road and very close to the sidewalk.
Well, and right, and, but so zero, when that was built, there was zero. And so there, they might be not zero, but there's also no step backs on that building. They have the little, you know, I don't know, atriums or whatever they sit out on, but it's, it's not truly stepped back like what we did with the downtown, once they get to the 35-foot. And I think that's the, that's the major problem is it's zero there. So it's literally right on the corner.
Well, and I, but again, my point is, is if you're going to go up 50 feet, as opposed to 35 feet, if you're going to go up 50 feet, I'm, I'm saying I don't think 50 feet is five or seven. I don't think it's, it's enough.
You know, and if, if that's something that you want to amend, then you can look at that as we go forward. Lou?
I think part of the discussion that we had in regards to kind of terracing the heights up was to maintain kind of a quaint entry into the downtown and then building that elevation. Would it be, and we do have residential elements associated with this area as you go up Lapham. There's, there's quite a few houses up in that subdivision there. And I would think that if there's a 50-foot building at each one of the corners on Wisconsin and Lapham, that would be kind of non-welcoming to the residents that are using that going up and down. Is there a way that we could, would it make sense to take that 15-foot setback and maybe shrink it to a 10-foot setback and go from a 20 to 50-foot height to a 20 to 40-foot height? And then take that immediate blue area west of Lapham, that one lot, and make that the salmon colored. So you don't create that corridor at, at 50 feet going up Lapham and that you kind of minimize some of that height as it applies to the residential traffic going up into the subdivision.
You can offer it as an amendment. I mean, what you do though there is you do have 15 feet on each side of the street as a, as a setback.
Right, but if you shrunk that to 10?
But you have 15 feet already. It makes it simpler to keep it the same and those residential units are all elevated. They're all higher, you know, you go up a hill to get up there. So they have height already, so, I mean, they, it's just, that's what we looked at Plan Commission, Architectural, same thing. You have that height component there where those buildings are elevated already. So they're up higher than these buildings would be. And then you're assuming that someone's going to put a 50-foot right at the corner, so...
Well...
And a 50-foot building is no higher than what the Gateway Apartments are or what the Betroth across the street is. So I mean, it's not a, most of your houses are, how tall is a standard house, 30 feet?
A two-story.
Two stories, 30 feet, so a three-story is going to be, you know, a little higher, but it's not going to be that much higher, especially when you have residentials that, that are 50 feet higher than the, the Wisconsin Avenue is.
There's 15-foot setbacks on either side of Lapham, right?
So you got 30 feet, you know, 15 on each side plus the street, so you got pretty good, pretty good width there.
But again, if that, if that shrunk to 10 as opposed to 15 and then kind of brought that height down, then we get a little bit of a terrace effect as it would apply to the overlay. And it would be associated with the Lapham Street, Lapham Street, which is a residential access point to the subdivision, which has some, some thought behind it as opposed to kind of, you know, multiple lots associated with that blue area.
Okay, Matt?
Yeah, just to respond to that, Lou, you've got the hill there already behind Laurelburgs. So when you, if someone does build there, which would, you know, if Laurelburgs ever wants to move or build something new, you know, a set of apartment buildings there, like what's at Gateway or even Worthington, would, would probably be perfect there. Because you just, you have a, you have a huge bypass right there that's kind of ugly anyway. You know, what else would you get to put there? And, and up on that hill, they've got apartment buildings. Look at the map, I don't know if you've ever driven up there. They've got big apartment buildings up there already that are...
Condominiums.
Or whatever they are.
That's what I meant, they're higher.
They're 40 or 50, they're 40 or 50 feet high and they're on the hill, so they're like 100 feet in the air. So I think one of our goals should be to maximize what the business owners can do. And if you look at the rest of the, the text amendment, these, these folks that are along Fowler Lake also have to stay 45 feet back from the lake. So if we keep scrunching them, especially with some of these more narrow units, more than we are, I think we're going to, we're going to screw those guys up if they do want to develop or they want to sell. Now, they can always ask for a zoning variance, right, Jason?
Right, it's called a planned development overlay and they can get some flexibility in the ordinance.
So, I mean, they, if somebody came up with like the greatest, coolest, you know, live-work residential space and they needed to go into that area, they could. But I think we want to encourage this area to redevelop someday and I, I think that we don't want to scrunch these people too much. Because we're already scrunch, we're starting to scrunch them and we're creating more landscaping, which is going to be, you know, is going to remove some of their rentable or buildable space.
If we, if we make it too restrictive, then nothing will get developed and it'll be vacant the whole time.
Yeah, it'll, it'll become...
It'll look just like it does.
Yeah.
Derek, you're next.
Matt brought up the point, I was just going to bring up apartments or the condominiums on the hill are, are probably at least 50 feet already.
Elevated, plus then they're high, yeah. Mike?
Jason, I like what you've done. I've liked the unity to everything. I like the changes you've made over to Pleasant. I'm 100% satisfied with everything that's on here.
Charlie?
You know, Mike, I'm in agreement with you that it, that it's really good, but I'm also in agreement with Jeff on the setbacks along Wisconsin Avenue. They should be consistent with what's on the western part of town too. And if that's 10-foot on the west, you know, as you go west of the gateway, it should be 10-foot east of the gateway.
What is, what is the west? Well, you got zero and then you got 10.
As you get down farther towards...
You got the orange area and, yeah, you got...
Yeah, but towards Worthington, you're at, you're at 10-foot along Wisconsin Avenue. I think we should be at 10-foot out there as well there.
Where are we at now with the, the, the houses just, I think they would be, um... Wisconsin, just west of Thompson Street? The, or the, I should say that. Right next to the gas station out here. The, the businesses that are, looks like they're, they're houses, but they're businesses.
All like...
They're, the Realtor...
Probably 15 to 20 feet back.
15, 20 feet back, okay.
And I guess one of my other comments is we're asking, we're saying we're putting in landscape requirements, but we're saying you got five feet, you know, with the way this is proposed because then you have your building and where's your landscaping going to go? Is it going to go behind the building? I mean, that's not really what we want. We want more, a little bit more green space out front and we want to add some landscaping features in front of these buildings. And, and, you know, again, going back to what we did on the west end, I, I think 10 feet is fine because we do have the option if there is a case where it just doesn't work and there's something that has to go in or you can't do the, the overlay.
You know, and, and I look at that and then you have 10 feet and then someone comes in and says, well, I need five feet. Then you got someone else that has 10 feet. So you have, you, you don't have consistency as you go down, down the street. I think if you, you pick a spot, you have to have a spot that's, that's usable for everybody because otherwise you have too many inconsistencies in, in the way that street looks. It just wouldn't look correct. Derek?
I'd like to propose an amendment to increase the, the setback to 10 feet along Wisconsin Avenue, Fowler Street and Lapham Street. The non-arturials, I think, can stay at five.
Second? Wisconsin?
In the blue area. We can leave it at 15 if you want, over by...
Yeah, don't include Lapham.
No, only on one side, isn't it? Okay. I'm sorry, then from, I would like it to be 10 feet between Lapham and Walnut and along Fowler Street.
Motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
A second? There's already a second. Any discussion on that? Matt?
Yeah, let me, I'll just add, I don't think we want to scrunch these people too much. Five is already better than what we have now, which is zero. We have vision corners already, that handles the vision corner issues. We, we had 10 on the other side because it goes into residential. This is going into a railroad and a bypass. We're not going into residential. So with, the concept behind what we did on the other side of town going to 10 feet is we wanted to step back the setbacks as we went into the residential so it looked kind of like it was becoming residential. People are driving along this, they're going to the bypass, you know, they're going out to 16, you go to Milwaukee or Waukesha or Pewaki. It doesn't go into residential at all until you go up the hill, so...
I think something came up good in the, in the Plan Commission meeting too. As you are on the west end of town coming in, that's the approach into the city. Here, we're looking at the approach into the city from the east, from the bypass, so it's a different concept because we're trying to, to make this approach into the downtown area. To have this setup makes more sense because this is more of our gateway into the community. And it's the way this is configured for businesses because this, we're trying to develop a business district in our downtown area, but yet that's not specifically downtown, so... That's something that was brought up at Plan Commission as well. Are there any other comments on the amendment? Okay, so we have an...
Can you, yeah, I do have a comment. Can you show me with a laser pointer where your amendment all includes?
I don't have the...
It's all up and down Wisconsin Avenue.
I, I would like to amend my amendment and say it's only on the north side of Wisconsin Avenue too because I think those properties are so narrow on the railroad side. So it would just be along here and along the north side to there. And I, I, I think...
I'm okay with the way it is.
I guess I, I, I feel that that's going to be a walking way along Wisconsin. That, that develops, I believe you're going to see more people walking there if there's a residence. What I'm saying is it, it... What I'm saying is it'd be more appealing to walk along there and with a bigger setback. I'd like to scratch this side, though, because they're so narrow already, I don't think.
So it's the north side of Wisconsin.
Just the north side of Wisconsin.
I think that was kind of assumed. Since the south side doesn't have any sidewalk or anything, because it's a railroad, so. Okay, any other comments? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second to amend the setbacks from five to ten feet. Correct, on Wisconsin Avenue?
On the north side of Wisconsin Avenue.
And also on Fowler Street. Call a roll, please. I vote would change the setbacks, just so everybody knows.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Swart?
Aye.
Alderman Stray?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Nay.
Alderman Rosick?
Nay.
Alderman Shaw?
Nay.
Okay, and again, this is for the first reading. So, I mean, this can always, if people change their mind, they can change their mind. Okay, that's, so that amends the ordinance to change that setback to ten feet. Are there any other discussions about the amended ordinance now? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the amended ordinance, call a roll, please.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Swart?
Aye.
Alderman Stray?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Rosick?
Aye.
Alderman Shaw?
Aye.
So we'll have a second reading in January? And at that point, if any changes are made, how does it work if an amendment's made in January?
It's just like you're doing it all over.
Okay.
It's on the agenda, you can discuss it and do anything you want.
I understand that, but if it's amended, does it have to have another reading then?
No.
Okay. Okay, let's move it on. Next item is Consider Act on Certified Survey Map for land division of one-two-seven-eight Allen Road. We need a motion to approve the certified survey map.
I'd like a motion to approve the certified survey map.
Second? Jason?
This is a reapproval of a certified survey map that was drafted in 2011. It takes the existing lot on Allen Road at twelve-seventy-eight Allen Road and divides it into two lots. One would contain the existing home, and the second would be a vacant lot for future residential construction development on that vacant lot. Its zoning is residential, it's owned by Grant Steinman, the Plan Commission did recommend this land division.
Okay, we'll hold it up for discussion, Charlie?
Yeah, Jason, on this, can you discuss a little bit the infrastructure improvements and the cost? Because there's a comment on here that no assessment will be charged to the applicant. Can you explain all of that? I'm having a hard time understanding whether that fee got paid or did not get paid.
Right, the fee did not get paid. He came in 2011. At that time, we were, the street, Allen Road was in our street construction project. And we said, well, we were assessing people that have previously divided on Allen Road as a cost, and that was going in to help pay for the road. He did not end up dividing the land, so basically he was off the hook. We went ahead and did the project. It would be like doing a street project in front of us in a subdivision right now with no land divisions. It was a city cost, whatever the balance was, and he didn't have to pay. Now that it's done, he doesn't have to pay.
Okay, but then by creating this lot, there will be impact fees created and other costs that are going to be associated that he's going to have to cover.
Right, when he comes in for the building permit, you will have to pay impact fees. Highways is one of the fees that.
Okay. Thank you.
Did he know that the road project was going in and purposely waited to subdivide? Do you know, I mean, why, how did that play out?
He knew about the cost, it was an assessment of nineteen thousand dollars. I don't know if that's why he waited.
But he applied for it in 2011 before the road project started.
Right.
And then sat on it, didn't move forward, and now is moving forward since the road project's been done to avoid the assessment. Okay. Crystal clear?
Do we have a sense of what the cost variance from the, what would have been assessed to the impact fees associated and other fees? What that difference may be? So he was going to pay maybe nineteen thousand dollars back then, but now with the impact fees and the other things associated with what he's looking to do is going to be ten, or is it going to be eighteen, or?
It'll be considerable less than the nineteen thousand. Impact fees depends on where you are in the city, but it could be, you know, five, seven thousand dollars per a house. So it's going to be less than the nineteen thousand dollars.
I would caution the common council. The city certainly had the option of including a reserve or an assessment that would be conditioned upon future division, and you didn't. So I don't want this council to take that into consideration with regard to the proposed land split.
So what you're saying is that when we started thinking about roads out there, we should have been proactive?
Well, you could have, and you, and many municipalities do. If you have a thirty-acre parcel and you do a road project, you say, okay, we've got some reserve assessments. If it ever does divide, each individual lot will get blank.
So, very good point, I appreciate that point. I was going to vote no on this because I think this guy gamed the system. However, I'm going to vote yes, because we should be proactive in the city if we're putting a road in that could be subdivided, that we assess that properly.
I just wanted that not to be a factor under consideration here.
I understand. I appreciate that.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor, call a roll, please.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Swart?
Aye.
Alderman Stray?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Miller? Alderman Rosick?
Aye.
Alderman Shaw?
Aye.
Next item is Consider Act on Certified Survey Map for land division to create an outlot on Paps Farms Boulevard. Now, we need a motion to approve the certified survey map.
I'd like a motion to approve the certified survey map.
Second. This is to create an outlot, so it's a non-buildable lot. And the purpose of this is to transfer the two-point. This is the Boulevard one, sorry, I had the wrong one in front of me. This is to transfer eleven point seven acres of the stormwater facility that's on Paps Farms Boulevard to the Paps Farms Stormwater District. The Paps Farms Stormwater District met as a body, and they did recommend this certified survey map going forward.
Discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor, call a roll, please.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Swart?
Aye.
Alderman Stray?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Miller? Alderman Rosick?
Aye.
Alderman Shaw?
Aye.
Okay, next item is Consider Act on a Certified Survey Map for land division to create an outlot on Oconomowoc Parkway East. This again is Paps Farms, we need a motion to approve the certified survey map. So moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded, Jason?
Very similar to the last one, it's another Paps Farms Stormwater Certified Survey Map. It creates one outlot. It is for stormwater purposes, there's a facility out there, and it carves land around it. This is directly behind Fire Station Number Two off Oconomowoc Parkway. This is an outlot, it's an unbuildable area. It would, it's creating the certified survey map so it can be transferred to the Stormwater Management District.
Okay, do you have any questions or comments on this?
Make sure my basement stays dry out there, Jason.
That would have been the other one.
Oh, the other one, both of them, this one's even closer, yeah, well, you're right.
No, the other one's close.
They're both ways.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Seeing no discussion, call a roll, please.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Swart?
Aye.
Alderman Stray?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Rosick?
Aye.
Alderman Shaw?
Aye.
Next item is Consider Act, you're losing your voice, aren't you?
The S's.
Consider Act on an Extraterritorial Certified Survey Map to combine four lots at North Sixty, West Three Eight, Three Nine Zero Hawthorne Drive in the town of Oconomowoc, we need a motion to approve the Extraterritorial Certified Survey Map. So moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded, Jason?
As mentioned, this is an extraterritorial certified survey map, which means it's outside of the city limits, but it does fall within the city's review authority. It's about a half a mile from the closest city boundaries. This is simply combining four tax key numbers into one. This was a county request that they do this for future sake, so there's no new lots being created. They're just combining four lots into one.
Any comments or questions?
Do we lose a tax base on that?
This isn't ours, this is the town of Oconomowoc. We just do it as, we have extraterritorial zoning within three miles, correct?
Three miles.
Three miles, so anything that they want to do, we have to approve? That's just part of the law. Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, call a roll, please.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Swart?
Aye.
Alderman Stray?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Rosick?
Aye.
Alderman Shaw?
Aye.
Okay, next item is Consider Act on an Extraterritorial Certified Survey Map to create a new lot at North Fifty-Eight, West Three Nine Nine Five Seven Highway, Wisconsin Avenue, Highway Sixteen in the town of Oconomowoc. We need a motion to approve the Extraterritorial Certified Survey Map. So moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded, Jason?
Plan Commission also recommended this certified survey map to you. Again, it is within the town of Oconomowoc, but it does fall within the extraterritorial platting area of the city. It's about a third of a mile away, it's on the far west side of Wisconsin Avenue. Out near, you have Schweifels, and then you have that strip center with the pet store grooming area, and it's directly behind that multi-tenant commercial building. It is creating about a one-acre lot out there for future commercial development. And the Plan Commission did recommend in favor of this.
Charlie?
Yeah, the only question I have, does this meet any, whatever zoning requirements they have out there so that they can develop a one-acre lot?
We don't have extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction, so we don't get into what the zoning is, but it's platting only. And we look at, you know, does this lot have frontage on a road? And does this lot, you know, there's certain things that we look at, the shape of the lot. Someday, it could be part of the city, so we're more concerned with the size, and one acre is perfectly acceptable for a city commercial property.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second, call a roll, please.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Swart? Alderman Stray?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Miller? Alderman Rosick?
Aye.
Alderman Shaw?
Aye.
Okay, under old business, we have Consider Act on Ordinance to Repeal and Recreate Section One-O-Four, one point zero four point one of the municipal code relating to ults and bonds of treasurers. This is for a second reading by title only, we need a motion to approve the ordinance. So moved?
Second.
Basically, that was the second reading, this is something we passed the last council meeting. Do we have any questions? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second, call a roll, please.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Swart?
Aye.
Alderman Stray?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Rosick?
Aye.
Alderman Shaw?
Aye.
Okay, next we have, where am I here? Consider Act on Ordinance Repealing and Recreating Section Nine Point Two Eight of the municipal code regarding sex offenders. We need a motion to give this ordinance a second reading by title only. So moved?
Second.
We did make some changes to this in the first reading where we amended the distance. Do you want to give us an update on that, Chief?
For your consideration, action today, we changed the sex offender registry ordinance to, child safe zone to one thousand feet from seven hundred fifty feet. At the last council meeting, there was discussion, it was determined that the distance should remain one thousand feet. So today, we're discussing repealing and recreating portions of municipal ordinance Nine Point Two Eight, which is residency restrictions for sex offenders. Why we're here today is September two thousand and eleven, just to recap. So we passed a sex offender registry ordinance similar to several communities in Wisconsin. April two thousand and seventeen, a federal judge found several rules in Pleasant Prairie's ordinance as unconstitutional. As a result, Pleasant Prairie and a number of other communities have been sued. After this occurred, we felt it necessary to bring the ordinance back for the common council for discussion and be proactive and decide what changes we need to make to our ordinance. In working with Attorney Larson, he pointed out some issues that were brought forward by the federal judge. The first thing was, we needed to provide the common council with a number of studies and data regarding the safety risks associated with allowing registered sex offenders to live near various locations, and provide the common council with data regarding registered sex offenders in the five-three-zero-six-six zip code. We're maintaining our thousand-foot child safe zone, which means it allows nine percent, or approximately six hundred sixty-four residential housing units available in the city to registered sex offenders. Our ordinance will also create an appeal process. The common council would act as the residents' board, which would allow registered sex offenders to have due process, to give the individual an opportunity to show why they are not a risk. Decision is based on requirements of the ordinance, the nature of the offense that resulted in the registered sex offender status, the date of the offense, their age at the time of the offense, recommendation of probation, recommendation of the police department, recommendation of any treating practitioner, counseling, treatment, rehabilitation, status of registered sex offender, duration of time since their incarceration, their support network of the registered sex offender, the relationship with the registered sex offender and the victim, the presence or use of force in offenses, adherence to terms of probation and parole, proposals for safety assurances for the registered sex offender, and conditions to be placed on any exceptions from the requirements of the ordinance. We also revised our penalty section to incorporate the general provision, penalty provision to include all sections of the ordinance. And we created a new section in the ordinance acknowledging that Chapter Nine Eighty of the Wisconsin State Statute preempts the city ordinance, which allows to state the placement of violent registered sex offenders in a community outside of a fifteen-hundred-foot child safe zone. The state's child safe zone identified as schools, places of worship, childcare, youth centers, public parks. If the offense were against an adult or elder at risk, it would include nursing homes and assisted living facilities. And then a violent sex offender cannot live adjacent to a residence occupied by a juvenile under the age of thirteen. So that's why we're here today.
So basically, the only change we made to it was we went from seven fifty to a thousand feet. And that was what was amended during that previous reading. Matt?
Yeah, I wasn't here for the first vote on this. I think currently, we are at a thousand feet right now, so we're actually just keeping it to a thousand feet. We're adding the exception under Nine Eighty, which is for violent offenders, which I agree with. And we're adding essentially this appeal process. Just for the folks that are here or however they're watching this, on page six, section three, that talks about the residents' board, the factors that you just read off, Chief, are only some of the things we can consider, but they're not limited to those factors.
Correct, once the ordinance is approved, we'll then have a committee of the whole, and we'll have discussion of just what the considerations will be.
In addition to those, or, okay. But the way it reads there right now, it says applicable factors shall be considered but not limited to, so A through O are some of the factors. We can add more factors or subtract factors.
Correct.
On page two of this document, I think there might be a mistake, and I think it's the fourth bullet point at the top of page two. And Stan, maybe you can jump in here if I'm wrong. It says, there's, this is our basis for changing the statutes. About twelve to twenty-four percent of sex offenders, it says right now, will offend.
Will reoffend.
It's supposed to be reoffend.
I agree.
Okay, so that change, I don't know if I need to make that, or if that's just a mistake of drafting, and we don't need to make that change, but I can make that amendment if need be.
That's fine, I mean, I guess you could read it either way, they're going to offend again, but it should read reoffend.
Okay, should I make that amendment, then?
Sure.
Okay, at this point, then, I'll move to amend the fourth bullet point on page two at the top to read about twelve to twenty-four percent of sex offenders will reoffend.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, call a roll, please, on the amendment?
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Swart?
Aye.
Alderman Stray?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Rosick?
Aye.
Alderman Shaw?
Aye.
Okay, so now it's amended?
My only other comment is, I'm glad that we left it at a thousand feet, I don't like setting up the appeal board. You know, we, our community has not been sued, just because one or two. Just because one or two communities out there, for disparate reasons or disparate facts, have been sued, I don't think that we should necessarily have to change or make it easier for folks to move in with these type of offenses. So I will be voting against this, regardless of the changes I made to try to improve it.
Okay, any other comments?
There was one question the last time, and I answered it, but I want to reassure you, my answer was correct. The question was, somebody from the outside didn't live here before, doesn't have the original domicile rights to come back here. The question was, does the appeal boards, if they grant their right to be here, allow them to live anywhere in the community? The answer is no. They have to be outside of the child safety protection areas.
So that is still the only area that's available?
It's the only areas that are available.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, we have a motion in the second on the amended ordinance. Call the roll, please.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Swart.
Aye.
Alderman Stray.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Nay.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye.
Okay, moving on, under new business, first item is consider act on offer to purchase six thirty East Wisconsin Avenue for purposes of public safety building. We need a motion to approve the offer to purchase.
I'll make the motion.
We have a second.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, Stan, do you want to give a report on this?
There has been discussion, let's back up. First of all, we started with the condemnation process. We, in that regard, adopted the resolution, starting everything in motion. We obtained an appraisal. The appraisal came back at one point one-three million dollars. Recognize that this property was on the tax rolls for about twenty years for three point, nearly three point four million dollars. And so, under the law, we started, we gave the appraisal to the property owners in California. They reviewed it, gave them their rights letters, which gave them the option to get a second appraisal. They have not. They did their own appraisal work. They're sophisticated owners of twenty-seven or twenty-eight shopping centers, grocery stores across the United States. We engaged in discussions with them. We, they originally wanted three point two million dollars. And through these discussions, they are and have indicated that they will accept two million fifty thousand dollars for the property. So the question before you tonight, will you authorize and direct me to prepare the paperwork to acquire this parcel at two million fifty thousand dollars? During discussion previously, there was indications that if we do so, we should include a provision that allows us carte blanche right to go into the property, do a complete and thorough inspection to make sure that it will meet our needs, that there aren't any problems with regard to the current condition of the property that would inhibit us from rehabbing it for the purposes of the public safety building. So before you tonight is whether or not you will direct me to complete the transaction to acquire that property at two million fifty thousand dollars.
Thank you, Stan. We'll open it up for discussion. Kevin?
Yeah, once again, my concern is, I'd like to know if the four walls are really sound enough to be able to begin the process. First off, I want to thank you for really negotiating well there. That's outstanding, you did a good job there. But my concern here is that we go ahead and if it passes and we pay two million fifty thousand and then come find out that we get some engineers in there and they say, we can't use the building and it needs to be torn down, then we kind of got egg on our face. So I'd really like to see some outside engineering firm to go in and poke around and do what they need to do, and give us an answer to whether or not this building is sound enough and we can use the four walls.
One thing I wanted to bring up too, we did, we did a, I don't know if we approved or, I know we put in the capital improvements budget, a ten million dollar budget for a new facility. So if we spend two million fifty thousand on the purchase of the property and the building, we still have another eight million dollars available for maintenance, or I should say rehab of the facility. That was what we approved earlier this year.
Now, wait a second now. That ten million was a very soft number.
But it was approved as a placeholder. So that is, that is in the capital improvements budget. It's not saying we're going to spend ten million dollars, but that's been put out there. Jeff?
I guess giving a little bit more history on this, there were everything from vacant lots to other buildings in the city that were looked at as a result of a study that was done. Chief, was that last year or the year before already that we had the study done and for how much space we needed and?
You want to come up, Chief?
Maybe you'd be better off to go into the history of that and then?
You don't need to fill out a blue card either, Chief.
But you need a PowerPoint.
He's going to turn the tape when you're up there.
I've been training Mark.
Oh, okay.
He's getting closer.
He's got his card certified.
In the spring of two thousand seventeen, we were authorized to have a needs assessment done by WSM. So WSM came in, met with our staff, looked at our facilities, looked at our statistics, and did a needs assessment based on that information. They then came out and gave a presentation to the common council based on the assessment.
And that, that assessment was for what, thirty-eight thousand square feet?
Thirty-nine thousand square feet.
Thirty-nine thousand square feet, and that goes into the year?
It's twenty-five years out.
Twenty-five years out, correct. So that's a pretty good-sized building, and we looked at things like access to the bypass, how you can get around town. And I think based on all of the sites that were looked at and the information that's presented so far, that was determined to be the best site, not only by your staff and discussions, but also it was looked at by the consulting firm, correct?
Correct. We went around with WSM and showed them the available sites that we looked at around the city, and they felt that the center was the best location.
Thank you.
Any other, Matt?
Yeah, so I think the two million fifty is still high. I don't, I don't want to give that much just for a building that we're going to end up ripping all the guts out and then rebuilding. The ten million was what we put in the capital budget, but, you know, that was kind of a guidepost. And I know we've had some back and forth, Chief, and on several different occasions, that just because the ten is there doesn't mean we spend the ten. I'm concerned that we really haven't done more, really digging around with other buildings. I do think there are other potential options that we really haven't explored in other parts of the city. That doesn't necessarily mean I'm going to vote against it tonight, but, boy, I don't know. The other thing I'm really worried about is mission creep. So we get this huge massive building, we don't really need all the space, and then we start jamming all sorts of other stuff in there that we end up having to pay for. The need study that was done also included the courts. My understanding right now is the courts are not coming. Are they moving with us, or do we not know that answer yet?
It looks like they're not moving with us. WSM went back and redid the study without the courts, removed the courts from the study.
Did, did we get that study? I don't remember seeing that study with the courts pulled out.
They didn't redo the study. We had some discussion where we looked at what space they would need. If you remember, the study actually had the space needs detailed out by function. And so we asked them just to kind of look at the footprint of this particular building. If we remove the court section, what space, you know, would be white, you know, then and not used, so?
How much did that reduce the overall cost and square footage needs?
Well, it got us down to a point where it was near that ten million dollar range with the purchase of this facility. But again, we're, you know, that's something, we still have to, we still have to cut considerably to stay within that ten million.
Right, and that's a different discussion.
No, that's different. What we're talking about now is the purchase of the facility, so?
So there was a number, and I don't know because we talked about in closed session that the council at one point was happy with, we're considerably over that number. So I personally think that we should stay firm on that number and go back to them and offer them. I mean, I don't know why we can't negotiate a little bit more and why we have to walk away from significant amount of funds. And Stan, you can tell me if I can say that number, I don't know if I can or should.
You can say any number you want. I mean, bottom line is, my direction would be to go back to them and say, we don't have a deal. Period. And if they want to walk away, they can walk away. If they don't, they don't. If we then want to come back and issue a jurisdictional offer to acquire it through condemnation and take it, we can do it that way.
Right, and I'm not saying, I don't think we want to go that route, but what I'm saying is there was a number discussed in closed session that we were all comfortable with, and now we're significantly over that in the six figures plus, and that's my concern. And, you know, every time we start creeping into additional hundreds of thousands of dollars, I think that should be a concern for us.
Well, if we're going to not approve the two million fifty, I'd rather talk about what we would be willing to do in closed session.
Okay, so if this vote fails, then we go back in at some point and talk about what the number would be for what we should offer. Okay, that's fair enough.
Just to make a point, the number that we talked about was a target. I think people were comfortable with a higher number, but the target number was that because that was the number we assumed was what it was on the market for. And that we find out later that it was not on the market for that price. Jeff?
I agree with your comment there, Mayor, but the other thing I also look at is if, no matter what, if we are, if we did decide that we wanted to go the route of the full condemnation on it, it would end up costing us very close to the figure that we're, that we mentioned tonight as two million fifty thousand. And, you know, the unfortunate part of it is, as municipality, any time that somebody knows that a city wants to buy a piece of property, whether it's vacant land or a building like this, it seems like costs go up. But this building and this site is giving us the opportunity to have a municipal building downtown, and as our city grows, if we need the space, we're not going to have to go out and buy more land. It's a nice-sized property, it's everything that we came up with in the, in the study. And we did look at some other buildings, and I'm not saying there aren't other buildings out there, but buildings are separate from location and response times and needing to be able to get to certain areas and having accessibility and where do we want it? And I think that personally, I don't ever want to see us move our police department out of our downtown area. I think it's, I think it's important that it be there. And I think of how many times people walk into the lobby when they have an issue just because of where it is located. And as soon as you move it out of the downtown, we're taking that away. So I, with the additional growth that we have downtown, I think it's important that we keep the police department down there, and I think this is a great location.
Eric?
I'd like to, I'm not super concerned about the increase in price, but I am concerned about the scope creep. I know personally, if you have a bigger garage, you put more stuff in it, and it just, you're going to use the space that you have. And I'm concerned that it's going to get more costly, more than the difference in what we had talked about on building it out. So we should make sure that we're watching what's going in there and making sure that we don't have excessive amounts of?
I don't think that's part of this, though, is it? What we're talking about? I mean, that's a good, very good point, but I don't think that's part of?
No, I'm just bringing it up. What I'm saying is, I'm fine with, if the big cost isn't going to be the increase in price, it's going to be down the road, so I'm supportive of it.
The remodeling and whatever we do with the facility, I agree. Lou?
I don't think it's just the remodeling. It's, we're acquiring more acreage than we need to get a building bigger than we need. And a location that I'm still not sold is the ideal location within the city limits. For those reasons, I'm hesitant to, to support this. If this was the location based on all, all sites, not just vacant sites or for sale sites, that would sway me completely differently. But that's not what was done. If this building was more in line with the square footage that the study shows that we need, that would be impactful. And to acquire the acreage and not know what we can do with that acreage at this point, just so we have it in our back pocket at the price that we're looking at, doesn't necessarily sway me that direction either. So for all those concerns, I'm not excited about this one.
Derek, you were next.
I guess I, I'm going to rely on the study that was done and the chief's feeling that this is a very good site. And I don't, I don't want to displace anybody for a better location because we proved that we're, this council has not used eminent domain, to my knowledge, and I don't think we're going to. So we have a willing seller on a site that the police chief feels is ideal, and we have room for expansion. Jeff brought up in, I can't say, I'll bring up my own comment, that we have, we'll have extra room there and, and we won't, I don't believe we will lose money on, on that site. It's a large acreage for two million dollars with a building. I believe the inspection's important. I don't know if you write in there, they have the right to cure any problems? Or if you tell them it's no deal and we walk away? I think you'd want to have right to cure.
I don't like to have a right to cure. I like to have us walk, be able to walk away.
Correct.
Okay. I'm just wondering how you like to write it.
We can inspect to our heart's content. We got to, with our sole, you know, discretion. We don't like it, we walk. I'll probably put in sixty days, is sixty days acceptable for us to get in there and get the inspections done? I would suspect it is.
Okay. But I guess, to reiterate, my point is, is I don't want to displace anybody or even try to, to put a police station in. It won't, it won't happen, and they will pay a lot for it, a lot more.
Charlie?
Well, we really don't have a better site. You know, to say there's an ideal site somewhere in the city, there really isn't, we don't have that. I'm comfortable with the price that's here, considering that they have been paying taxes, I believe you said, since two thousand and three on three point three-eight million. And they're willing to sell for two million fifty thousand. I think that's a good price for this piece of property, provided we're able to put the law enforcement center in that building and not have to tear it down. I'm not in favor if we have to tear it down.
And I, I think we talked about that quite a bit. You know, going back to the space needs, though, some of the court offices were the only additional space that the courts were going to take. The courtroom itself was, is going to be a dual, or would have been a dual-use room, right? Correct, with the training and, for training and other uses, meetings?
It would have been dual-use. We did look at keeping the cost down by downsizing it a little bit once the courts withdrew, but it's something we'd have to look at.
But it's also a situation where if the courts aren't ready to move right now or we don't need them to move out of this building, there may be a time that, that they grow and that does come in. That's still going to be a viable possibility to possibly move it there. It doesn't mean that we have to use every inch of space in that building. We're talking about buying a property that is going to allow us growth and options in the future so that we don't have to go out and look at another property then because we say, well, we can't put anything more here. And I look at, at community needs, and again, not saying that it'll happen, but, you know, when we start to look at things like our food pantry and our senior citizens and different things, I'm not sure that having that property after we get everything all said and done, that there aren't going to be other uses there for it that are real needs in our community. So, again, very much in favor.
Go ahead, Matt.
So I want the record to be clear. The study we did in spring did not go out and search for properties that were appropriate. We gave them, like, I think, three or four options and said, out of these three or four that we found, which one's the best? So that study did not go out and canvass the area or get a realtor or broker and say, what's available? What could we buy, what's out there, who's interested? That is, that's a correction that I think is important. In addition, look, you gave me, Jeff, exactly my problem with the mission creep. We're not, we set out a year ago to buy a new police station or build a new police station, not buy something that was well beyond the square footage we need to maybe put a food pantry in, and a senior center, and a skateboard park, or whatever else we want to put there. That, that shouldn't have been our goal because we're trying to budget to build a new police station. And that's, I think, the mission creep I'm talking about and the problems that that creates. So what square footage is that building right now, the century building? Do we know the square footage?
It's approximately thirty-eight thousand. And the study was, the study, original study was for? for needs assessment was about thirty-nine thousand square feet.
When you take the courts out, how much does that change that?
Wasn't it about five thousand?
Roughly five thousand square feet.
Square feet, chief. So it's not drastically different from what the needs assessment showed.
So, I mean, either way we look at it, we're, we're increasing, this is a ten percent or so plus or minus increase of what we talked about. It's significant money. It's real money. I, I do think we should negotiate. I, I, I still think we should have done more to look around more. I, I'm not necessarily one hundred percent unconvinced by the site itself. But I think, and Stan, let me know if this needs to be in our motion. I think it's imperative that a structural engineer looks at this site.
Oh, it will be.
Yeah, not just.
We'll get anybody we want in there.
And we'll have a, a general inspection contingency, but my direction to the staff is that we don't just have a realtor go by and walk through it.
No, no.
We, we have a structural engineer look at those walls and look at that stuff very carefully, and if it costs ten grand to do it, it costs ten grand to do it, because this is a huge purchase. And I like what Stan said about just walking away.
Yeah, no, we, we've had, we've had that before with, I think, Wilkerson Clinic. When we looked at that, we had structural engineers go through that site.
And I want to report from those guys, too. We need to have a report from them.
That that building was in good shape, and, and they told us the same thing, so we could utilize the same type of.
I've already talked to Mark, and tomorrow we'll meet with the building inspector and get some names of people that we could contact.
Try to get him in there as soon as possible to, to give us that idea before we get the report.
I, I remember that property was a dump at one time in the back there. That whole back riverbed back there has got to be just a mess in the first place, and it was an actual city dump back in there. Because I think the policeman used to chase me back in there, back in my days, but anyway. I, I, I agree with Matt on, as far as like the pricing, I mean, it's okay, but you know, you, you look at things and you know, when you're talking about houses and cars, which I don't have one, that, you know, I'm going to barter one of these days to get the thing down, but I, I'd like to see, you know, try to make a little different bid on this particular thing. I, I, you know, those people on California, you know, for seventeen years, I don't even think that they knew they had that building out there, to be honest with you. So I would like to, you know, try to whittle the worm a little bit. I've, I've got no problem with everything else there that, you know, I think the site's okay, and, and, but maybe not a lot, but just a.
Lou?
Just want to make one final comment in regards to how I may vote on this. If I, if I don't support that this particular position, it's not because I don't believe we need new facilities for the police department. I, I want to make sure that, that those residents in my district and the city know that that is a true and real need that I believe the city has, and it's one of our, our major obligations as a city to provide safety for the citizens. And we have, we have one opportunity to do it and do it right, and do it within a budget that, that I think the city will accept. And we do have a placeholder of ten million dollars. At the end of the day, if this thing comes in at twelve million dollars, or thirteen million dollars, whatever that may be, based on the size of the acreage and the size of the building that is larger than we need, we're not doing anybody any, any, any service, and I, I wish that we would look in some additional locations that may give us some, some more leverage as we find the right spot.
Okay, I had a couple of comments I wanted to make. A couple of reasons I think this is a good idea, and a couple of things that kind of project the cost. By moving the facility from here to, it doesn't matter if it's that facility or if it's another facility, we free up approximately thirty parking spot stalls behind the city hall. And we all know how hard it is to find a parking spot sometimes downtown, especially during festivals or events, Christmas shopping, summer activities, people on the lakes, so by doing that, we immediately provide a benefit to the community. Another benefit that we provide to the community is we take a property that's been vacant and kind of an eyesore for the last at least fifteen years, ten to fifteen years, and give it a purpose. And give that east end of town a purpose with redevelopment that will bring in a revitalized structure and activity. I know the businesses down there are very concerned about the fact that they really have no activity down there. Everything is closed, it's, it's vacant, and this would bring in renewed activity and possible other developments in the future. One of the, the, the concerns was, okay, we, we are assessing that property at three point four million, so once it goes to the city, that comes off the tax roll. We reached, recently sold the old YMCA property, which was another one we looked at or considered for the facility. But that was non-taxable. That's going on the tax rolls. So really, we have a net gain there of of repurposing some land in the city that has been unused for a number of years, and we end up providing services for senior housing, and we provide services for a public service facility. So I think the way we want to vote on this, or the way that the, my recommendation is to approve this purchase, so that we can start the revitalization on the east end of town. We've got a lot of revitalization going on in the, in the rest of the community with developments on the west end of town. We have new development starting over here on the, right next to city hall. This would just be another point of, of showing that the community is evolving and growing and providing services that the city needs. So that's, that's just the point I wanted to make up, that people have to look past just the certain cost of the facility, but what is it going to provide for the community? Okay, do we have any other comments? Jeff?
Yeah, my last comment has to do with the fact that we haven't looked at other buildings. We did, I mean, we didn't hire somebody to come in and go out and try to find every available building, but what we did do is we had our city planner and the chief, and I don't know who went with you, but they looked at other buildings that were for sale in the city, in different locations, and compared them, and they looked at vacant land sites, and obviously, you know, you can buy some land a little less expensive, some a little bit more, but the cost of building is certainly going to be a lot more than it's going to be with getting an existing building. So, you know, it's, it's not that they haven't done their due diligence, and I, I, I don't want anybody to walk away thinking that, that you didn't, you did, and so.
Okay, thank you, Jeff.
Okay, so the motion that we have is, should be to consider act and offer to purchase with.
authorize me to issue an offer to purchase and allow the mayor to sign it for two million fifty thousand dollars with a minimum of the contingencies being that we are able to inspect the property in any manner we see fit for a period of sixty days, and if we are in any way dissatisfied with the condition of the property for any reason, we can rescind the offer.
Okay, so that's the motion that's on the floor. Any other questions? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Call the roll, please.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Zwort.
Aye.
Alderman Stray.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Nay.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye. Moving on, next item is consider act on statement of shared use agreement between the city of Oconomowoc and the Oconomowoc Area School District. We need a motion to approve the statement of shared use.
So moved?
Second.
John? Thank you, Mayor. As you know, the city of Oconomowoc, the Oconomowoc Area School District have provided facilities and services to our community on an annual basis. These, historically, both organizations have worked together to provide recreation programming, education, athletic events by sharing facilities when appropriate. So to formalize that ongoing working relationship between the two governing organizations, the school district staff, along with city staff and the attorneys representing both, put together a statement of shared use. This statement was brought before you back in early November, has gone to the school board through their finance and operations committee, as well as their school board. It has been approved. We did make two minor changes from the original proposal that came to you. The word limited was identified near one of the high school components and others. Those were strict, based on recommendation from council. So it's back before you tonight, looking for your approval.
Great, thanks, John. Open up for discussion. Matt?
One of the questions I had were some changes about the language. Do you remember this? Did that get changed? I, I don't remember exactly.
The word limited is what you were concerned with, if I remember correctly, in the original one?
Yeah, they, they limited us, but we didn't limit them or something.
And that has been removed. It's no longer there, so all facilities are available based on availability.
To each other.
Correct.
Right, that's what I wanted to make sure that that was in there. I, I can't remember what I did way back when, when we first looked at this, so.
Yeah, that's what it was.
Okay. Where, would, do you remember which paragraph that was in?
I can find it. I have the original draft here.
Do you?
It was under section two, third bullet point. It said, "High school site providing for limited adult sports," so it was eliminated there.
Yep, okay.
And...
I thought there was one other spot.
There was one other spot, and it was removed in both.
Perfect.
I can't remember where it is, though.
I don't see it again, so I, I, I think that's fine.
It, it was removed in two locations.
Thank you very much, John.
You bet.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor for the statement of shared use agreement between the city and the Oconomowoc Area School District. Call the roll, please.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt. Alderman Zwort.
Aye.
Alderman Stray.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye. Okay, next item is consider act on a quitclaim deed for Northeast Region Stormwater Management Outlet, Outlet One between City of Oconomowoc, OASD, St. Matthews, L. and M. Enterprises LLC, and Badger Land Financial. Need a motion to approve the quitclaim deed.
Moved to approve the quitclaim deed.
Second. Mr. Frye?
Couple of weeks ago, we went through the same process with, when there was some difference in interpretation of meets and bounds over older descriptions when we were talking about the park project. That's the same situation here. Once again, going back through some of the older legal descriptions, it could be interpreted one way or another, but all of the entities in this area have approved the CSMs that are in place now. We're all satisfied with the land that we have, and this is just the easy way to take care of any potential future issues if someone were to interpret one of the older documents differently than what we're showing.
Thank you, Mark. Questions? Seeing none, we have a motion, second on the floor. Call the roll, please.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Zwort.
Aye.
Alderman Stray.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Nay.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye. Okay, next item is consider act on the twenty eighteen Badger Land water ski shows. We need a motion to approve the schedule for the twenty eighteen shows.
Second.
Don?
Before you is the application and permit for the water ski show, Badger Land Water Ski Organization. This one, before the Park and Recreation Board at a recent meeting, was approved by the board to come to you this evening for your consideration. If you remember, historically, last year, the original permit was for three shows on Thursday evenings. We came back, amended the permit to allow two additional shows on Sundays, so they had a, which was approved. They had a total of five shows. This year, the ski show is requesting to have a total of seven shows. Three on Thursdays, four on Sundays. Under item number six, we'll give you all the dates and the times of those shows. You know, there's a long history of, of details that I, you know, shared with my memo to you. I'm not going to go through all the history, but the short version is, at one point, there was a total of ten shows that were offered by Badger Land. We had some challenges with shoreline erosion, other things that got resolved through council action, did some shoreline improvements at Fowler Park, and ultimately, they reduced their number of shows down to three by their choice, and now they've slowly been going back up as they get more people involved, and they continue to expand as an organization. So the request this evening is for seven shows. Three on Thursdays and four on Sundays, per the schedule.
Thank you, John. Comments? Charlie?
With the addition of the Sunday shows this year, have there been any complaints from the lake residents about the fact that those shows were happening on Sundays?
My office did not receive any complaints during the twenty seventeen season, and they had two shows on Sundays last year.
Any other comments? Jeff?
Yeah, I have not received any complaints from people up in that district either, but I have heard many, many compliments about people really enjoying those shows. So, I mean, obviously, we can always change them going forward in future years if we do start finding out that there are too many of them, but it seems to be a much appreciated community event, so.
Great, Tom?
John, do you think, I know we had erosion problems, I think I was on the report back then, do you think that these added two is going to, I know there's been some work done over there, but, you know?
That's a, that's a difficult question to answer, because erosion probably does occur at some level. Anytime there's boat activity on that lake, depending on how fast they're going, and what type of engine they're using, and there's a lot of factors. Are seven days in the year going to have a substantial erosion throughout the entire area of the lake? I, I'm not sure I can quantify that compared to the rest of the erosion on the rest of the days of the year. It's a difficult thing for me to quantify. I don't live on the lake. I can tell you that the shoreline improvements along Fowler Park, which we manage, has minimized or nearly eliminated any shoreline erosion in that specific area, but I can't speak for a private residence property that is, maybe doesn't have the same type of shoreline structure that we have at Fowler at this time.
Derek?
I enjoy the shows. I live on the lake, and I think Sundays are probably more invasive than Thursday nights, but to people who maybe don't enjoy the show as much, it's a night when a lot of people are home and maybe having dinner, but I'm glad they're there. And as far as erosion goes, you get a day with twenty mile an hour winds constantly. Those waves are as big as any boat puts out, and it's all day and all night, sometimes for multiple days. So it's Mother Nature doing what it does. It's going to erode the shoreline, and you have to maintain it every once in a while, so I'm in favor of it.
One additional comment, Mayor, if I may. One of the ongoing challenges when you manage a park system is making sure that you have balance between the amount of community-based or events that take place in balance of residential life. And so one of the things we really try to do is make sure they're spread out and there's balance. A similar thing that occurs is that for concerts, we allow two concerts a week at City Beach, so we don't have music there on a constant basis. This, I think, kind of fits that same thought process still, and if you were to continue to creep beyond ten, for example, as they used to have in the future, you bring other issues into play, because people do buy property along the lake to use it and enjoy it, and so we have to balance how many times we bring large events in front of those, those property owners. And I don't think we're doing that quite yet, but it, it's always something that we think about, and that's why we come back to you guys for final approval, because we want to make the right decision for those lake residents.
Are any of these in conjunction with the moonlight movies? Sometimes they do that.
Two of them are, the two Thursday night ones.
Those are always a big hit, too.
Yes.
Another community event that we, we've been doing a lot of them, so. Any other comments? Seeing none, we have a motion, second on the floor, to approve the twenty eighteen Badger Land water ski show dates. Call the roll, please.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Zwort.
Aye.
Alderman Stray.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye.
Okay, next staff reports. Dan, you have a report you'd like to give us?
Yeah, just a brief report on our January third proposed council meeting. City Hall is closed on January second, which is a regularly scheduled council meeting night. It also happens to be the deadline for candidates to file their paperwork for mayor and alderman. So therefore, we have tentatively scheduled a council meeting for Wednesday, January third, at seven thirty P.M., because statutorily, we need to act on whether or not council wants to hold a local primary if more than two candidates file for any of those seats. If not more than two candidates file their papers, then it won't be necessary to have a council meeting. And I will know this information early in the morning on January third, because the deadline, again, is five P.M. on the second. And so what I would do is, on the third, as soon as practical, I would be reaching out to all of you and the public, letting you know that, yes, there is a meeting, or no, there is not a meeting.
Thank you, Dan. Chief, you have a report you want to give us?
I was asked to give a, a brief report on the horse carriage incident that occurred.
I saw it.
December ninth, so let's take a minute here. Okay, so... So this is where it starts. The car- The carriage is behind the Avenue Square Mall. Avenue Square Mall has Santa Claus there and one of the, uh, business owners hired the horse and carriage. A gentleman had his vehicle parked right here and he was kind enough to move it to this location right here.
Boy, you're really getting tired.
Prior, prior to the accident. So, what happens is, uh, the carriage is loaded up with eight people, the youngest being eighteen months. There were, I believe, five adults and, no, three adults and five children are the youngest being eighteen months. So, the, for whatever reason, the horses got spooked. We're uncertain if it's, one of them slipped on the ice, if the operator slipped on the ice or a passing vehicle scared the horses, but they started to take off. Uh, the operator of the carriage tried to get back on, but she was unable to. The horses came out, turned right down Cross Street. Um, at this location here, they chose to come to the inside of this vehicle parked here, striking this vehicle, traveling up on the sidewalk. It then turned right onto Collins Street where it struck. Four more vehicles, you can see here, continued on to North Main. As it's coming down North Main Street, there's two vehicles stopped here for the red light, one to turn left, one to go straight. The operator in the vehicle turning left says she's looking in her rearview mirrors, sees it coming, but there's nowhere she can go because of cross traffic. At this point, the two horses decided they're going to try splitting the difference. One travels between the vehicles, the other one travels to the left of the vehicles and the carriage goes into the back of the vehicle in a left-hand turn lane. Um, and that's where it ended. I had two officers working that day, so it took four minutes for them to respond. Uh, fortunately, we had a chop with a cop going on, so once we heard the call, a number of us responded over there. And we'll just go through, this is the first vehicle that was struck, as you can see, as I said, the coach traveled up on the sidewalk on this side here, striking this vehicle and moving the vehicle from where it was originally parked. Normally, the operator isn't parked that bad.
You didn't have to white out the plate. We know.
That car is not parked well at all, just as you know.
So, this vehicle is apparently totaled.
I mean, really, it's in the middle of the...
Not legally parked, legally parked.
They were after that twelve pack of line of Googles they got in the back of that window.
So, going down Collins, this is the first vehicle that struck. You can see where it, the horses and the carriage bounced off of the driver's side door continuing on. This is the next vehicle on Collins that was struck. Witnesses indicated that basically the, at this point, the carriage was almost up on two wheels, wheels as it struck this vehicle.
With people in it, right?
With eight people in it.
Wow, that was quite a ride.
We were very fortunate, nobody got hurt. Uh, this would be your, uh, I think I went one too far. All right, this goes, that's fine. So, this vehicle right here sustained minimal damage. And then, this is the next vehicle that sustained heavy damage. Um, you can see, that vehicle also got moved at one point. This is the overall scene on Collins Street, one, two, three, four vehicles struck. Um, and then this is the final resting point of the carriage. You can see where the vehicle tried traveling between, uh, the two vehicles. You can just see the back end of one horse laying down. Uh, we were fortunate that neither of the horses got hurt. They had some scratches on them. We were very fortunate that there was a gentleman there who was very knowledgeable about horses. He was familiar with that type of horse. He was able to cut loose their reins and take control of them until the operator of the carriage got there. So, um, this, basically, when the horse went to the left of this vehicle, it rolled across the top of this vehicle, as you can see. Wow. That vehicle's totaled. And this is how it looked from the front with the, uh, two carriages. Again, nobody was hurt. Um, and speaking to the officer who spoke to the eight occupants of the carriage, they were in cup of hot chocolate after the incident, waiting to talk to police, and they seemed perfectly fine.
Thank goodness, right?
No airbag deployed in the carriage?
No airbag deployed on the carriage. Any questions?
Thank you, Chief. I want to commend the, everybody, the, I was coming down Wisconsin Avenue, um, to the west and I pulled up and I saw this and I was like, this is just terrible. But I want to commend the fire department and the police department and everybody else involved for the work they did to make sure that nobody got hurt, the horses were fine. Everything was cleaned up within a matter of an hour or so. It was, it was just as outstanding performance by everybody.
The horses didn't get hurt?
Got some scratches, apparently, that was it.
See, they didn't get hit, they hit the cars.
Yeah, but they, well, the one like climbed on top of one, basically. I thought maybe he'd break his leg or cut himself up.
They were big horses, they were sixteen, eighteen hundred pound horses, so.
Well, it was the buggy that hit, hit a lot and made the damage there. That thing rattled on there.
Yeah, I think that's...
But I, I got to commend the horses because, you know, they're by the thirsty bird where you have that no left turn sign that about every other car makes a left, the horses went right. That was good.
Well, the operator said if those two vehicles would not have been there to stop them, they would have turned right onto Wisconsin Avenue and then turned right back on the cross street and gone back into the south lot.
It would have got me, it would have got me again.
That's the route.
They know the route.
On the other side.
Oh, really? Okay.
That made sense, okay. Thank you, Chief. Any other staff reports?